Everyone, Jonathan Nez here, President of the Navajo Nation Yate. Then he did need those. I know some places throughout the Navajo Nation is receiving moisture as we speak and there's even snow. So winter is here, ladies and gentlemen. So and to start us off on the town hall meeting, let's bow our heads and let's give this time to our Creator and also give our Navajo people to the Lord. Our Heavenly Father, we just come to you to stay thanking you for everything. We appreciate all the presenters that are on the call today that will give information out to our people. And we continue to pray for our Navajo Nation, our Navajo people. Or instructions were given and it's upon our people to take those protocols and apply it throughout their day. Nothing has changed here in those protocols. And we just appreciate that guidance coming from you that we may be able to push back on COVID-19 in our communities. We also pray for those who have lost loved ones. We pray for healing for those families. I know that it is tough. Families are not coming together for family meetings or even for funerals, but we just ask that you touch their hearts, comfort them in this time and heal, heal their broken hearts, Lord. For that they are missing their loved ones. And we continue to pray daily for strength and wisdom, protection and good health for our Navajo people. We also pray for those who've caught COVID-19. Many of them have gone well. We praise you for that. And then some are still having some difficulties with their health, Lord. And we just lift them up to you that you will continue to heal them throughout this public health emergency. We just continue to look up to you as the great physician of healing for our Navajo people. And as we come together today, Lord, may this presentation reach as many people as we can so that we could be reminded that we are not through this public health emergency. And we just give you the praise and the glory. We thank you for answering our prayers for the moisture. We thank you for answering the prayers for pushing back on COVID compared to other places throughout the world. You have most definitely blessed the Navajo Nation and we give you the praise and the glory. And we just thank you again for an opportunity to serve. We pray this all in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. There's a lot of people on the call. If you could mute your phone.
Okay.
The flu season. Flu shots. The new. Washington. So. So. And. 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 You know, we want to put some slides up. As I mentioned in Navajo, you know, thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-eight people have contracted the virus since March first of two thousand and twenty. That's the start of the first case to today. And if you see the slide there, one thousand four hundred and fifty-six of our Navajo people have lost their lives to COVID-19. And our thoughts and prayers go out to those families. And you know, the epidemiologists and the public health experts have said that much, if not all, the spread is happening in social gatherings, homes. You know, we let our guards down. You know, we don't, we don't know where some of our friends or relatives are, are at. You know, this, this virus is very contagious. And we may do everything in our power to stay safe, but once we take that mask off, you are very vulnerable to catching COVID-19 in these very variants. And you know, the, the time that the masks come off is when we eat. And you know, Navajos, we love to congregate and come together and have a good time and fellowship and eating. But that mask comes off. And when that mask comes off, you're very vulnerable to COVID-19. And so that is the reason why our healthcare experts out there have said, be careful. You know, in your immediate household, yes, you can have, come together and meet and socialize and then have a meal together. But when it comes to others that you don't know where they're at, you have to be very, very cautious. You know, maybe having meals outside, social distance, you know, things like that will help bring these numbers down. So it's social gatherings, that's birthday parties, church events, traditional and religious gatherings. Those are at the utmost where a lot of the virus is spreading in our communities and it fluctuates, you know? It goes up and down. So slide one shows you the breakdown of the total confirmed cases. Slide two shows you the graph since the start. And you know, if you compare it, today's numbers with the last year around March and also at the holiday season, it's pretty low, but it still fluctuates daily. You got, you got like yesterday, we had eleven. Sometimes it goes all the way up to sixty, seventy. And then another day it goes down again. And so it fluctuates. And I'll show you a chart in a bit about the comparison between the U.S. and the Navajo Nation. And slide three, and this is the one I was talking about. Slide three shows you the comparison. U.S., you know, it's high, yes, U.S. But it's starting to come down and you see that downward trend, that blue line. It's coming down and you can see the past couple of days that it's starting to flatten off in the United States. But look at the brown. That's the Navajo Nation. You can see a lot of fluctuation, daily case counts. And it's, it's not going down. It goes up, it goes down every day, every other day. And so like I said, it's because of these social gatherings that are happening here on Navajo. So please stay committed to wearing your mask and following these protocols. But let me also say that, and this shouldn't be an excuse to just live wild and not wear a mask or, or don't follow these protocols. But because of the high rates of vaccination, you know, you, we don't see a high number of Navajo people needing to go to the hospital, get admitted into hospital because of COVID-19. But now the hospitals are taking in, you know, some of the, maybe the appointments or some of the operations that need to be done that were held at bay since last year. And they're starting to do those. So the emergency rooms are, are being used by non-COVID-19 because they need to take care of our Navajo people. So be very cognizant of that. And let's work together to keep these numbers down. The next slide shows you the comparison. You know, last week, the bar was, we were above Colorado. And good news this week, we are the lowest out of the four states around us. Utah is way at the top. Right under Utah is Arizona. And then right under Arizona is New Mexico, then Colorado and the yellow one. The yellow line is the Navajo Nation. So again, let's continue to work our very best in keeping our families safe and our communities safe. The next slide, the last slide is the variants. And the most prevalent variant here on the Navajo Nation is the Delta variant. But if you look at the breakdown, the report twenty-three, five hundred and forty-nine of these, these are random samples that have been taken. Five hundred and forty-nine of those rambles, random sampling have determined that that was Delta variant. So there's probably a lot more Delta variant out there because it's the most prominent. Delta Epsilon is eighty-one. And if you go at the variant being monitored, the Alpha, the Gamma, the Epsilon, the Iota, the B one-six, one-seven point three, the Mu, then the Beta Gamma. So all together with the variants that are here on the Navajo Nation, out of these rambles, random sampling, eight hundred and thirty-five are these, these variants that were shown in this graph. And so again, we caution everyone to stay safe as we go into the winter. We don't want the same thing to happen as what happened last year during the winter, the holiday season. We learned a lot. And I keep mentioning, we're not closing government down. We need to provide services. And so with us not closing down government or slowing down any services, we, it is upon us as citizens now to be responsible, to hold one another accountable. And you know, let's not divide our households on what needs to be done. Let's all do it in love, not for ourselves as individuals, but wear a mask, do these protocols because we love our family and because we want our Navajo Nation safe. That's why I think we've been very successful here on the Navajo Nation. People look to the Navajo Nation for guidance. You know, overall, with the vaccination, over seventy percent of our Navajo people, the residents here, and that includes the twelve-year-olds now, right, that are fully vaccinated. And we appreciate everybody getting their shot. We just continue to encourage everybody to, to get their vaccination against COVID-19. Here on the Navajo Nation, government employees, ninety-three percent of our Navajo Nation employees are fully vaccinated. And some have taken the exemption for religious purposes or health purposes. And they get tested periodically to keep our Navajo Nation government employees safe and to continue to provide services for our Navajo people. So thank you so much. God bless you. And I'm going to turn the time over to our vice president here, who is probably in Mariano Lake where I'm supposed to be for the opening of the paved road there. And so, Vice President, thank you. And thank you for your leadership as well for the work that you're doing with the Economic Recovery Work Group and the things here in Winter Rock. So turning it over to our Vice President. God bless you, everyone. Go on up.
Yeah, Mr. President. Thank you for your leadership. I appreciate that. Thank you for the opening prayer as well. And look forward to seeing you out in Mariano Lake. You're right, I am in route. Had to pick the best place for coverage here. But as I always do, give a report here and then pass it on to, believe Dr. Jill Jim. I'm not sure. Sorry, I was going through a bad coverage area, but you could just chat to me who's next and I'll introduce them. So real quick, the United States, as we look at the pandemic all around us, foreign tourists who are vaccinated against COVID-19 with a drug approved by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration or the World Health Organization will get a green light to enter the United States in November. According to a spokesman from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, foreign travelers will need to show proof of full vaccination prior to boarding U.S.-bound planes. A COVID-19 test will also be required within three days of departure and proof of negative results must be shown. Enhanced contact tracing and masking will also be required, but there will be no quarantine mandate. Closer to home, Arizona, COVID-19 hospitalizations have been easing downward in the past month with people who aren't fully vaccinated accounting for nearly all of the serious illnesses and deaths. The total positive cases the last seventeen months, one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-one, with one thousand, seven hundred and sixty new cases. Apache County, a little bit closer to home here, thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two total cases with nine new cases to report. Navajo County, fifty-six new cases to report. Coconino County, forty-seven new cases to report. So you see, it's a kind of elevated numbers but have plateaued. So again, as President has says, please just apply, apply the, the new knowledge and information and stand tact and ready and be vigilant always over your surroundings. Colorado, you know, we do own land, ranches in Colorado there. So the nation is represented there. We have holdings there and a lot of our domestic citizens live there as well. COVID-19 continues to rise in Colorado this week, including the incidence rates. The state positivity rate is also rising according to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. As of Monday, the state's seven-day positivity rate is seven point four-five percent, which is up from six point eight-four percent. The highest positivity rate in the state over the past seven days is Delta County there with eighteen point four positivity, no pun intended. Total positive cases the year in, six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and forty-nine, with one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five new cases to report there. Closer to the Navajo Nation here in New Mexico, San Juan County is reporting over four hundred positive cases of the virus in just two days last week, according to the New Mexico Department of Health. And San Juan County has the second highest number of COVID-19 deaths of any county in the state, just behind Burna Leo County. The county's largest hospital, the San Juan Regional Medical Center, is reported and they have a seven-day average of over seventeen percent positivity rate in testing. So there is no update on three-day weekend that just transpired here, the holiday weekend. So no new numbers there. San Juan County has nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty-seven total cases, seventeen months in. And also McKinley County has fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight. So New Mexico is not reporting right now over the three-day weekend. So we'll have those numbers shortly. I'll probably throw them out over social media. So lastly, on our three states here, Utah, COVID-19 cases are on the rise in some Utah schools. And data shows several of them are more than halfway to meeting COVID-19 tests to stay requirements. In the last two weeks, the Utah Department of Health reports fourteen schools are at or near the threshold of cases, many of them being elementary schools in northern Utah. So there we have, again, Utah, the three-day weekend kind of kept us from being able to report these. But seventeen months into this pandemic, five hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and ninety total cases in Utah. San Juan County there in southeastern Utah, two thousand, two hundred, two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two cases total. And Utah Navajo is one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two with four additional cases since last week. So in closing, we do have some closing remarks here. COVID-19, the disease caused by the SARS-CoV-2 coronavirus has no impact on some people and is seriously debilitating or fatal for others. Infected people without symptoms, which include but are not limited to cough, fever and difficulty breathing, are capable of spreading the virus. When you choose to get vaccinated, you're choosing protection, not only for yourself, but for your family, your teammates, your friends, your family, classmates and your community. Children ages twelve to seventeen years old are eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. Yet there is only one health district with more than sixty percent of children who are fully vaccinated against COVID-19. One health district has less than twenty percent of children fully vaccinated. And the U.S. economy lost twenty-two point four million jobs due to the pandemic. The recovery has been slower than many would have hoped, but according to recent data released by Wall of, Wall of, the progress has been steady. So this is the great catch-up for the Navajo Nation as we look to provide infrastructure, economic development, business development, enhancing water, power, sewer and broadband to our Navajo Nation. We want to be innovators. We want to be creators here on Navajo, to be builders. What way to build a better and stronger nation is to rebound and recover. Continue to pray for you all. We'll work like it depends on us, but pray like it depends on our Creator God, which it does. And so thank you for the time. I want to introduce Dr. Jill Jim now. I believe she's next or one of our public health officials to come on. Dr. Jill Jim, we appreciate Dr. Jim's leadership in this fight against this pandemic. She's been exemplary in her leadership, even receiving awards to that. But we appreciate again her, the Executive Director of our Department of Health. So Yate, Dr. Jim, take it away.
Oh, Yate Abene, I'm Shonatani Vice President Wizer. Although President Nez, that don't. So good, good morning, everyone. I just wanted to just do a brief update, just with what President and Vice President indicated. Just making sure that we are keeping our numbers down by protecting ourselves when we travel and staying at home or wherever we are round, rounding about doing errands and whatnot. The transmission levels are pretty high still. So just being aware of that. Today, we do have a number of guests here on the Town Hall today that can give us information. So I really want to focus on their information. So we're gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Virgil, Mr. Virgil Davis. He's with Windio, Windsor Indian Healthcare Center, excuse me. He's the Chief Operating Officer, sorry. I think I gave you a new title, Mr. Davis, earlier when I was updating our staff here. But he is also a member of the Health Command Operations Center and he will go ahead and introduce staff from the facilities so they can provide updates regarding COVID-19 and what's going on in regards to how we're responding from a tribal health organization. So I'll go ahead and hand over the time to Mr. Davis. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Virgil Davis, Chief Operating Officer for the Windsor Indian Healthcare Center. I am a representative of the Navajo Nation Association of Indians for Self-Determination and Healthcare. The six, in other words, six thirty-eight Association Healthcare Facilities for the Navajo Nation. Here on Navajo, there are eight. We have one, six thirty-eight facility in Utah-Navajo. We have four, six thirty-eight facilities in Arizona. And we have three in New Mexico, six thirty-eight satellite clinics. So today I'd like to introduce two of the six thirty-eight facilities who will be speaking about their COVID activities, mitigation cases, as well as booster shots and as well as other campaigns that they are implementing and following through this week, as well as throughout the month, as well as into the upcoming months. So today we have representing Tubus City Regional Healthcare Facility. We have Dr. Sofina Calderon, who is Deputy Chief of Staff. And then we also have Mr. Michael Jensen, who is the Chief Executive Officer for Utah-Navajo Healthcare Systems. So with that, I'll use this over to Dr. Sofina Cauldron. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I'm a family physician here at Tubus City Regional and have been assisting the Epi Response Team quite extensively here at the hospital as well. Mostly from the perspective of providing a lot of messaging for the community. So I've been tasked So I've been tasked a lot of times to, to really inform the community and make sure that messages are out there in formats that we can all understand to be able to do what we need to do to protect ourselves. So I'm here to provide a brief update from Tubus City. So here in Tubus City, we've actually been just over a ten percent positivity rate, and that was just over a week ago in our last report that came out last week. So still a little high and we're doing very well with testing. In the past several weeks, we've been testing over seven hundred per week for people that have come through with, for a variety of reasons, symptoms of any type, and even people that are concerned for any travel or any exposure history that have come in for testing. And so we still do encourage that. We, over the past eight weeks or so, we've been averaging about forty to fifty per week that have been positive for each week. And so it's been sort of, as President Naz has showed in his graphs, the curve is looking great compared to the rest of the United States, but we have, you know, we're, we're sort of in a little bit of a flat line as well, and so we're kind of holding steady the past several weeks. And hopefully, not too much of, of an increase or spike after this three-day weekend, given our gatherings. And as far as our contact tracing is showing, we do still show that a lot of our cases are coming from family gatherings. So people who get together, especially indoors, and I know it's getting colder, so there's not really any other option to gather except to died in an enclosed space. So that's where a lot of our cases are coming from, family clusters mostly. We're not seeing any positives from visiting the grocery store or going to the gas station. I know there's a lot of confusion about that as well, but our contact tracing does not show that. So most of our cases still are coming from people, you know, various households, multiple households gathering for whatever reason, and eating in an enclosed space. So that's where a lot of it is coming from. So just be very cautious and aware, especially among families who have sort of a mixed status of vaccinated versus unvaccinated. We have actually been found, we found also that our schools are actually quite safe. So a lot of our students across the Navajo Nation, especially on the western end here, are all in person and they've been doing very well. Our local Tubus City Unified School District has been all in person all days of the week, and they've actually been doing pooled testing as well. And so we're very excited about the results of that and the and it's proving to us and showing to us that the kids are very safe in school. Very rarely have we had a transmission or a case. I think it was just mostly amongst staff, like a staff person to staff person, but it did not link to any cluster in the school. So schools are very, very safe and we're very happy to see that. And there is no transmission, and this leads us to another thing that we've heard some confusion about in terms of transmission risk. You know, we're not seeing any transmission from sharing of school books or things like that. And so that's very important to know in terms of how contagious this virus is, but also how safe it is to be in school and using books and things like that. And our schools are being very cautious, our teachers are sanitizing things all over the place and have been doing very well keeping our students safe. Still, masks are very important, especially in any public space and in any situation where you feel like you might be exposed to someone who may be symptomatic, especially in a mixed gathering setting. Of course, safest would be outdoors, but also making, making sure you wear your mask if you're around other people whom you don't know their vaccination status. And making sure you yourself are vaccinated is the safest bet as well. As far as testing, we have a variety of people that are coming to get tested. We have people that come in to get tested for a headache, allergy symptoms. And we are very, we are strongly encouraging all people to come for, you know, especially if you hear that you've been exposed to someone, really watch your symptoms. After an exposure, we're recommending that you come in to get tested about two to three days after that event. It's tough to, you know, it's, it's not very likely that you would test positive right away the day after or the day of exposure. If you're exposed to someone you're concerned about contracting the virus. And so for anyone who has any symptoms, if you're wondering if you've got, you know, stomach aches with diarrhea, we've been seeing some people test positive with GI symptoms, especially with this Delta variant. And a lot of people with sort of vague allergy-type symptoms that have been coming, especially among the vaccinated people. So people who are fully vaccinated have great protection from the virus. And, you know, however, if you are of that small unlucky percent of people that do get, you know, happen to get positive, become positive from the virus, symptoms are, are going to be like, more than likely, very mild. So it's really tough sometimes to wonder, you know, if I have a little bit of a sniffle or mild headache, if it could be COVID or not. So we encourage everyone, if you're very, if you're unsure, just get tested. And in terms of our hospitalizations, we are, in the past few weeks, we've been at sixty percent capacity in terms of our adult care units and our ICU units being vacated by patients. And so we, we've actually been happy to see many days recently where there are no admissions for COVID. And so, and if we do have admissions, it's just a sort of a sporadic here or there, one or two admissions every day or so. And so it, it's been, it's been quite mild in terms of our, our load and how much we're seeing in the hospital. But we do see among those who are hospitalized, those who are being hospitalized are mostly those who have not been vaccinated, including young, healthy people who have not been vaccinated yet that are actually suffering harsher and more severe cases of COVID illness that need to be hospitalized. And among those who are vaccinated, those that were finding that need a little bit of extra respiratory support or, you know, a little bit of support even with IV fluids or, you know, a case of COVID that requires hospitalization among the vaccinated. It's usually the higher-risk group. So overall, the message is that vaccinations are working to prevent very, very severe cases of COVID, ICU-type COVID and COVID death. And so we're, we're still pushing for many, many more to get their shots. You know, we've done very well over, for those over sixty-five, it's great to see that about eighty percent of those have all been vaccinated. So that, that's perfect. And for those under fifty, so you know that age twelve and over, so twelve to fifty age range, we're still about fifty percent. We'd like to get that number much better and get, you know, our community at the, at a safer level of vaccination and protection so that we can, you know, enjoy our schools a bit better and doing our gatherings again at some point. But it's, it's, it's important that everyone sort of take that step to sort of contribute to that overall safety for our community. And we are still offering Regeneron in our hospitals, so that's the infusion of the monoclonal antibody. So that's the treatment for, you know, assisting with COVID to help reduce the progression of COVID to a severe form of illness. So we are offering that in our hospital. We've been doing a lot of infusions just about every day to every other day. And so we're, we're still quite busy with that and it's been helping a lot to help prevent severe illness from COVID. And so as far as our vaccines go, like I mentioned, over sixty-five, we're at a great and strong eighty percent. Younger age groups, twelve to fifty, somewhere thereabouts, we're about fifty percent. And so we need to get that number higher. As far as boosters, we're in full swing with that. We've been doing a lot of booster shots. So there's a difference here, and this is what I wanted to explain as well, between the third dose for people who have immunocompromised conditions versus those who are just getting the third booster shot. So for our immunocompromised, so people who have had cancer and are getting chemotherapy, people who, people who are on medications that reduce the strength of their immune system, that weaken their immune system. So for example, people that are, that have rheumatoid arthritis and are on special injections that reduce the effect of their immune system so that their condition would be better controlled. So all of these people, oh, and including those with HIV and AIDS. So for patients that have any of these conditions, we're finding that they have a larger benefit, benefit from getting that third shot to reach the full capacity or try to maximize their protection from the vaccine. Now for everyone else, and this is what we're doing now with booster shots. So if you got your second COVID shot for Pfizer, if you had your, your second Pfizer shot, so this is, this is only for Pfizer right now. We're still waiting for information and release and data for Moderna and and sort of to hear more about Johnson &amp; Johnson for those who got that vaccine. But for people who got Pfizer, if you had your second dose of Pfizer more than six months ago, you know, so this is back from April. So from April before April, if you had your second shot, you're welcome to come get your third shot or booster shot through any of our clinics and our drive-through vaccine tent. And so we're finding that, you know, the data is still rolling through. We're still trying to figure out the numbers and the effect that this booster shot is going to have in terms of what protection it's going to give us. We do know that those who have had their first two doses, though, provide very strong protection. And we're still seeing a lot of that good protection even up through, you know, these many months later. So, you know, there's no harm in going ahead, and I know a lot of people have done so to get that third shot. So it's, it's available, you're welcome to come through and get that third shot. And, you know, we're, we're, we're hoping and we're sitting tight to see more data on that, to see what the numbers actually show after getting that third shot. Flu shots are also in full swing. So we're getting our flu shots. You know, it's, 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 that season is coming, our gatherings are happening, people, people are starting to wear masks, not wear masks anymore around each other in smaller family settings and such. And so just as any common virus, cold, cough and cold virus could be spread, flu can be spread as well. So be sure to get your flu vaccines as well, and that's part of our annual flu vaccine campaigns. I think that's all I wanted to sort of share with everyone. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Cauldron. I'll go ahead and yield this over to Michael Jensen, CEO, Utah-Navajo. Mike?
Thank you. My name is Mike Jensen and Yat E. Benet to everybody. It's my honor to be here with you all and to give a short presentation on some of the things we're seeing on the northern side of the Navajo Nation, on the Utah side. Utah is actually still very much in the thick of COVID. In fact, our larger hospitals like the University of Utah and Intermountain Healthcare, they're running between ninety-five and ninety-seven percent full because of COVID. And, and they have recently elected to stop doing some of the elective surgeries and those kind of things because they need the capacity for COVID patients. Surrounding states are referring heavily into Utah, like Idaho has a very high COVID rate right now. Nevada has some, and so these hospitals are taking those patients as well. The good news is, we have not had a problem placing our patients as of yet. They've been very good about finding a bed for our patients. And as long as things don't get worse, we, we don't foresee a problem in, in terms of being able to place our patients. We too have about a ten percent positive rate right now. And we're about the highest we've been since early summer going into late spring. And so we're seeing a lot of cases primarily off reservation, primarily non-vaccinated, but, but we're seeing breakthrough cases as well. And so we too are really encouraging vaccinations. We've done some mass drives. Last week, we did about six hundred patients in, in three of our larger locations to the community. And another two weeks, or actually, excuse me, next week, we'll be doing mass vaccinations again. In the meantime, anybody can come into the clinic and get vaccinated for any of the shots. And so we're really encouraging that. We're providing masks to schools to make sure the kids, and, and hand sanitizer to make sure the kids can stay in school. And so far, we too have not seen many positive school cases, which is very, very encouraging. One thing we've done is we're using behavioral health as our first point of contact when somebody gets sick. I just wanted to share that because what we found is, you know, it can be very traumatizing for a patient to realize they're COVID-positive, especially if they're not vaccinated. And so our behavioral health person takes that phone call and starts coordinating care. We immediately try to set up counseling and make sure that mentally they're doing okay. Then that counselor reaches out to, obviously, medical, you know, for, for the medical care, but, but also to help with their temporal and welfare needs. For example, making sure if they're going to be homebound and quarantined, if they've got enough food at their house, water, and we're, we're doing another large wood drive now that it's getting cold. We want to make sure if people are homebound and can't get out, that they have enough to stay warm that way. And so we found that having them speak with a counselor is a good way to at least get them comfortable with the situation they're in, and then we start meeting their needs. So we, we plan to continue that through the winter as well. And then we'll do home visits and check up on them. We provide a pulse oximeter and a thermometer to every COVID-positive family and then check in daily to make sure that they're while they're, they're doing okay. And if their numbers drop, then, then certainly we refer them out to higher levels of care. I would share just one new program we're doing and then I will wrap up. But our behavioral health program wrote a, a large grant, and what we're trying to do is promote wellness in the community. So if people will commit to doing exercise, they actually can, they'll get a free Garmin watch to track their progress, and it's all tracked online, and, you know, you can kind of see how you and your peers are doing. But the idea was, we, we've all seen that COVID seems to really affect those that are heavy, you know, the, the overweight significantly. And so we're, we're trying to just promote more exercise, more activity, weight loss. And it's a program that, you know, they can earn some prizes, and even, even Garmin watches if they'll participate. We're hoping long-term that may have a positive impact on the community as well. Just want to say thanks to each of you all on the call during the COVID pandemic. You all have been phenomenal and, and been wonderful to work with, and I've really enjoyed hearing some of the creative and innovative things you all have done. And as a team, I think Navajo has done an amazing job on trying to combat the pandemic. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you, Virgil. That will, do you want to have some closing words for Six Thirty-Eight before we move on to Dell with Epi?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Jim. On behalf of the Six Thirty-Eight Association for Navajo, we just want to make sure that the communities are aware that we too are doing our part in concert with Indian Health Services to, to mitigate COVID, but also to make sure that we have our campaigns both for booster as well as for flu. And so these are occurring right now as we speak. And so we hope to do a little bit more messaging outward so that if there are any questions for any of our family members, our relatives in the communities where our six thirty-eight healthcare facilities are located, you know, please contact the appropriate facility for further guidance and information. So again, thank you. We do appreciate the time that you offered for Six Thirty-Eight to share our stories with how we are mitigating COVID here in Navajo. Thank you.
Hey, Dell, I was with the Epidemiology Center, so he usually does the gating criteria, so take it away, Dell.
Hey, hello, everyone. Yat E. Benet. To my colleagues and everyone on the call, Yat E. And my name is Dell. I'm with the Navajo Epidemiology Center, also with our HCOC COVID Epidemiology Team. Just, we do provide this weekly update on the gating measures for Navajo Nation, covering a two-week time period, September twenty-fourth through October seventh. Is our analytical time period and this is, we updated this yesterday. So our recent cases and trends, Navajo Nation cases, this is a sixty-day time window here, this graph. You see the bars there, they go up and down, as President has mentioned, our numbers, our daily numbers. Our numbers, our daily numbers of COVID cases do fluctuate quite a bit. So you can see that as the bars indicate that. So I like to usually mention this bar here is August 16th. At the time was our highest number of daily cases on that day. But we have another one here. I can't remember this particular day, but it's August 16th. So for about probably almost two months now, we've been on this plateau. As you see this red line, the nine day weighted center moving average line is on this plateau across the Navajo Nation. So we've been at seeing some very about 40 cases a day for almost two, two months now. So and we remain so for this, the latest analytical time period. So we'll just continue to monitor the cases going forward. So in our infection rate, seven day infection rate just peaked over one at 1.04. So last week was 0.97. So we are just right about one. Our threshold is at one for that infection rate. Again, we'll just continue to monitor that. This is our incidents across Navajo without border town cases. So this is our COVID spatial picture here. I'll just mention on this box here, 293 new cases in a seven day period from October 1st through October 7th, which puts our incidence rate at 185 cases per 100,000 people. And that's in the red threshold for our gating matrix for Navajo Nation. And then you can see the map here with the IXS service areas and our border bordering states. It's all red, so meaning that all our incidents rates within our region and IXS service areas are all at 100 plus cases per 100,000 people. And that's in the red level for, you know, gating matrix. So that's our current situation. We are, we do, we are still seeing cases throughout the Navajo Nation. Where, you know, the bigger service areas do have more of the higher numbers each week. For example, Shiprock and Gallup and Chinley have all for this particular week. I've seen more cases than the other service areas, but we are all in the red. There's some additional metrics here, testing capacity, our percent positivity is at 10.6%. Last week was 10.4, so it did go up just a little bit. 700, about 780 tests are being conducted over a seven day period on the Navajo Nation. So that's, we've been seeing about that for for at least a couple of weeks now. So there, there's testing going on across Navajo. Hospital capacity, we're around 60% for both regular hospital beds and ICU beds across Navajo Nation. Our contact tracers to daily case ratio is at two. It went from three to two, so our threshold for this is five. So we are below five and we're working on really trying to add some additional contact tracers across Navajo Nation. I think President has showed this, this is our Navajo Nation COVID strain surveillance work. These are latest table for report 23 as of October 5th last, a week ago, last Tuesday. We'll be updating this probably maybe later today or tomorrow. So as President has mentioned, this upper part of the table is the only variant that is currently labeled as a variant of concern according to the CDC. And on Navajo Nation, the Delta variant is really the dominant strain. Currently on Navajo at 549 cases identified with the Delta variant. And then the bottom half of this table is the variants that are being monitored. They no longer are labeled variant of concern, they're variant being monitored according to CDC. And these variants listed here are all variants identified on the Navajo Nation. Alpha, Gamma, Epsilon, Iota, this B.1.617.3. The Mu and the Beta Gamma variants, you see their numbers here. So a total of 835 cases that have been on the Navajo Nation that have been identified with either, you know, this Delta variant as a variant of concern or all these other variants that are labeled variant, variants being monitored. This is CDC profile for the COVID variant. As of, they haven't updated this. So the last date was October 2nd. So that's about a week and a half ago on Saturday. So, you know, this hasn't changed in quite a bit. The Delta variant, these orange bars are all Delta variant across the US, making up 99.4% of all variants. So the Delta variant across the US is really the dominant strain currently. This is just a picture, COVID picture, seven day case rate per 100,000 people across the US. I'll just, you know, within our region. It's Utah has seen some increase in cases over seven day periods. So there is a darker shade of blue. Then Colorado used to be green and now they've turned blue as well because they're, they saw increase in cases over the past seven days. Same with Arizona and New Mexico. So really within our bordering states, within our region, there's still a lot of COVID cases occurring. This is a community transmission across the US by by states and counties. You know, within our region, again, all the counties within our, within the Navajo Nation are all red, meaning high COVID transmission. This is a new slide that we created last week. This is the high risk chapters that we monitor. And there is a quest that was made to track chapters over time. So this is our, our new list here, the green from September 24th through October 7th. This is a two week time period. So these are new chapters for this week that we identified. And if you go all the way back here, the red is the past six weeks going back to August 27th. And this is just to show that these chapters here, the 13 chapters here have consistently been on the high risk chapter list. And so, and they, these chapters, you will find them in all these other time periods. And so I guess just a couple of things to note here is these chapters are, are, you know, bigger in size as population compared to other Navajo Nation chapters. They're, they're bigger. And also, if you think about their location, where they're located on the Navajo Nation, there, you know, some, most of them are located along like major throughways, high traffic areas to get from one part of the rez to the other side is what, what I see. And then some of them are located next to a border town, you know, like Upper Fruitland near Farmington. And so these are the 13 chapters as of the past six weeks that have consistently made our high risk chapter list. Oh, and the definition for this is to make this list is their incidence rate has to be greater than or equal to 100 cases per 100,000 population for two, two consecutive weeks. And then drivers of transmission is mainly as mentioned by other speakers, family gatherings is, you know, the main drivers of transmission on the Navajo Nation. There's some traditional faith based events that have occurred. Or actually just one, one occurred within the past two weeks. That has, there was some transmission that occurred of COVID. And then schools, there's, I think, a couple of schools at least that we've seen some transmission occurring. So these three mainly are drivers of transmission currently. And then just recommendation, risk level assessment. Cases remain high, we're in the red threshold, likely driven by the Delta variant, our test positivity remains high. You know, hospitalization remains, remains stable currently. And we're still not seeing any evidence of transmission occurring in a business setting. And last, where are we right now? We remain in the red level with cases testing and public health capacity. And then our hospital bed, our hospital capacity is in orange. So per CDC, if two indicators suggest different threshold levels, the higher level is selected. So that's therefore, we're in the red level. So I'm going to stop here. I don't know, Dr. Jim, or hand it over to maybe someone else. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Dell, for the presentation. This is Dr. Jim again. We'll go ahead and go over to the state of New Mexico. I wanted to introduce Ms. Janet Johnson and then I appreciate their time this morning with us to do an update regarding COVID from the state of New Mexico. So Ms. Johnson, go ahead and introduce your team and provide us an update. Thank you so much for joining us this morning.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. Thank you, President Nas and Vice President Mizer for this opportunity to share information and efforts that are being carried out by New Mexico Department of Health. My team also consists of Dr. Miranda Durham, who is the Northwest Regional Health Officer with New Mexico Department of Health and Dr. Tierney Murphy, who is our medical epidemiologist and they will be speaking shortly. I would like to present the last information that was shared by New Mexico Department of Health on case counts. This information was shared on Friday, October 8th. Case counts for the past four days will be shared this afternoon. On Friday, October 8th, New Mexico reported 972 new cases for a total of 258,943. Unfortunately, we also reported 15 additional deaths. I can now turn it over to Dr. Durham to present some more information about the efforts being undertaken by New Mexico Department of Health. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Miranda Durham. I'm a family physician working with the New Mexico Department of Health. Thank you so much for inviting us to be here today. And as Janet mentioned, I'm also here with Dr. Tierney Murphy from our Epidemiology Department. So to give a brief overview, as other speakers have mentioned, we are seeing a slight uptick in our positivity rate after we had seen a hopeful downward trend. So as of October 8th, the positivity rate for the whole state was 7.8%. Some counties, also as noted in San Juan County, more of an uptick at the end of last week. One of the new things with testing in New Mexico is implementation of a school testing program, which is just ramping up and is available to all schools in the state. Public, charter, BI, tribally controlled. And yeah, any, if I forgot, any in the list. And that is being run by a contractor, Premier Medical Group. They've started to do some initial testing and are having a meeting with schools. Kind of an open forum, schools that can join to ask questions about the testing program. But they are prepared to basically test at all schools in the state and help schools if they want to set up to do their own rapid testing, but also to do the surveillance testing. So in New Mexico, for all teachers are required to either be vaccinated or test weekly and they'll be helping with that weekly testing. In terms of vaccines, also echo the other callers that, or the other speakers really trying to focus or not lose focus on how important getting that primary vaccine series is. But on, at the same time, working on additional doses for people with immune compromising conditions and vaccines boosters for people who've had a Pfizer initial series. We have done, let's see, up through October 7th, and I apologize, we don't, our, our data is still coming out today. But through October 7th, we had, New Mexico had done 59,353 third doses all combined. And so that's both Moderna and Pfizer vaccine third doses for people with immunocompromised and Pfizer doses for people who meet the criteria for that. And so in New Mexico, we're giving Pfizer boosters to anyone 65 and older, anyone in a long-term care facility, anyone with an underlying medical condition and anyone and I should say 18 and up, anyone who has an underlying medical condition or works in a high risk works or lives in a high risk environment. In terms of breakthrough cases, we do continue to, our state lab does a lot of sequencing and basically it is all Delta still at this point. Breakthrough cases continue to be an issue, but again, really the vaccine prevents against serious illness and death. So even though we are seeing an uptick in cases, they aren't landing, you know, those people aren't landing in the ICU. So our total breakthrough rate is 13.5% as of 9/28. And I think 13.5% of our breakthrough cases are in Native Americans and Alaskan natives. In terms of continued safe practices, as you know, Albuquerque just finished hosting the balloon fiesta. And prior to that, we did have the state fair. The state fair implemented vaccine or test in order to get in. The balloon fiesta did not. Hopefully the fact that it was an outdoor event and did implement COVID safe practices in terms of masks and social distancing and hand washing, but keeping a close eye on case rates as we go out from that. And then in terms of what we call the coming attractions, tracking the ACIP or CDC Advisory Committee will be meeting October 20th and 21st to discuss Moderna and Johnson and Johnson boosters. And then meeting on November 2nd and 3rd to review the data on vaccine for kids age 5 to 11. So we're anticipating that that will bring new recommendations for us. And let me just pause and check in with Dr. Murphy and see if you have anything to add.
Good morning, everybody. This is Tierney Murphy with New Mexico Department of Health. I think you did a nice update, Miranda, and covered some of the main topics that other presenters had covered. So I think I, I will stand by for questions. I, I, I do echo the importance of vaccines and say that we are seeing primarily Delta variant here as well. About 97% of cases that were sequenced were Delta variant as of like three weeks ago. So we keep a close track on that. And again, we're seeing those vaccine breakthrough cases, but at low rates and they are preventing hospitalization and death. So I'll, I'll stay on for any questions. and um they are preventing hospitalization and death, so I'll, I'll stay on for um any questions and turn it back over to Janet.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy and Dr. Durham. That concludes our report, we do stand for questions and we'll turn it back over to Dr. Jim, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Johnson and also Dr. Murphy and also Dr. Durham for your presentation. And now I'm gonna go ahead and introduce Dr. Va, she's um with the Chinli Service Unit and she'll provide us an update on what one of the federal facilities are doing to address COVID, so um, Dr. Va, go ahead, thank you.
Hi, um, good morning, yes, my name is Dr. Va, I am the Deputy Division Director here for our Division of Public Health and Chinli Service Unit. And so um, I am calling from one of our Mass Vax Clinics here at the Wildcat Den um for our Chinli students. And I'll get into that in a little bit, but just to give you a brief overview of how Chinli Service Unit is doing. Um, as you've already heard across Navajo Nation as well, we're in our third wave, likely of course driven by Delta. Um, our test positivity over the last seven days, ending last week, it's fourteen percent, so quite high. So transmission is indeed high in Chinli Service Unit and has been high and stabling at high for quite some time. Um, and so you know, what we do do with our cases here is that we try to connect our, our community members who are diagnosed with COVID to connect them early to monoclonal antibody treatment. And so for those out there, if you are diagnosed with COVID nineteen, please ask your provider about monoclonal antibody treatment. It has been shown to be effective here and we do offer, offer it here in Chinli. Um, the other thing I just want to note as well is that we've been also working very closely with our schools. Um, as you saw, you know, the, you know, we do have a lot of exposures because transmission is so high. We've had a lot of cases also, you know, been exposed and go into schools. But transmission at school is incredibly low, just because of all the precautions that schools are taking um to protect staff and students. Um, and so I just wanted to note that as well. Um, now in regards to what is best, you know, as, as you've already heard, everyone's really pushing for vaccines. Just today, here at the Wildcat Den, we are expecting to vaccinate up to seven hundred, if not more, staff and students. And we are offering flu vaccines, um, COVID vaccines and COVID boosters. And so the catch-all, and we're trying to get as many people protected, especially during this respiratory season as we enter into the winter month and we go and move indoors. Um, you know, everybody is eligible um for flu vaccines now. Um, in regards to COVID booster, the um recommendation that we are offering is for those that um have received Pfizer. And so if you have received two doses of Pfizer and you're out of, with, you know, outside of six months from your second dose, you are eligible for a booster if you're sixty-five and older or if you're eighteen and older with um a high-risk condition such as diabetes or asthma or obesity, or in other circumstances such as the schools here. If you work in a high-risk area such as healthcare, or if you're a teacher and you work with students and the staff, um, you are eligible for a Pfizer booster if you receive Pfizer uh two full doses more than six months ago. Um, I did hear um the Department of Mexico talk about what to anticipate. You know, our team here is anticipating just um some new guidance that will be coming out, recommendations, including COVID nineteen vaccines for those that are five to eleven years old, as well as booster recommendations for those that are Moderna, have received Moderna and Johnson and Johnson. Just to be clear, again, the boosters right now are only for those that have received Pfizer, but we are anticipating um Moderna booster recommendations sometime soon, as well as Johnson and Johnson booster recommendations sometime soon. And our Chinli Service Unit will be working closely with our teams here on the ground to make sure we make that available to all, um, to all of our community members here at Chinli Serv-, in Chinli Service Unit. Um, one last, one last promotion for our Mass Vax Clinic at the schools. This is actually our first week starting um our mass vaccine clinics for schools and we decided to start with our largest school district first, which is Chinli Unified School District, again, here at the Wildcat Den. And we will be continuing to do this for the next few weeks. And then starting, um, you know, and then we will be opening this out to doing open pods for everybody who just needs a vaccine um at our chapter houses as well. And that's all I have in terms of our update here at Chinli Service Unit. I'll be also on standby in case there's any questions specific to Chinli, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Va, for joining us this morning and hope that we can get a lot of kids vaccinated, so I'm glad to hear that. Now I'm gonna hand, hand over time to Dr. Fowler, who will um close out the session and and Shamat, I just want to thank you for joining us as well, so take it away, Dr. Fowler.
So we have to really be careful, we want to continue that you take precautionary measures. It's a lot about self-responsibility. I do encourage all employees, not just Navajo Nation employees, if you're gonna eat at work, do your best in eating in your vehicle or at home, do not bring food to the workplace because those are some of the transmission that occur from the workplace. We could, cause even though we're unable to control you on weekends, that's your choice, but we, I respectfully request that you communicate with your supervisor on your whereabouts. [speaking Chinese] And then do you have what is called quarantine, if you've traveled into Texas, Las Vegas, Phoenix, do your best in informing your personnel and you got a quarantine. And then you probably have multiple sick leave annually, those are some of the things that you can take. And if you're an employee of Navajo Nation, if you test a positive, please review our COVID leave policy. [speaking Chinese] So we, we ask that you continue to take precautionary measures, wear your mask, wash your hands with warm water and soap, continue to use your hand sanitizer for safety reasons. Do your best in avoiding large gatherings. Again, we want to thank all the listeners and thank you, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Jill Jim, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Fowler and although um just um individuals from the different health facilities. And you may not hear from all the health facilities all the time and I'm, I'm glad also even from the state of New Mexico because what we're experiencing could be similar, it could be different in certain areas, so um, I just uh want to just thank them one more time for being out there, being on frontline workers and um, to express just the gratitude and also just to let everyone know that we can do this. We can um overcome and live with COVID, so that means just that the environment is what I'm saying. Um, that we can all take precautions every single day. It is up to us to make those decisions, um, to try to reduce our risk of getting um COVID transmission and even um Shamat even talking about that and really just understanding um our surrounding and how we live every day. But it is up to us and I think we can do it and we have um gone through this pandemic this far. We don't know when it's gonna end, but we know that um it certainly is doable to prevent COVID, so and getting um the best assistance that we can, which we're, we have vaccines that are available, there are many treatments that are out there. And also listening to your healthcare provider and your relatives and I just wanted to end with that.